Well, good evening and welcome to November 19th Durango City Council meeting. May we have the roll call, please? Councilor Batine? Councilor Brookie?
Here.
Councilor White?
Here.
Mayor Protim Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Marbury? And here. We're going to begin tonight with some wonderful youth of our community. These are the Devo champions. And so they all come to the podium, please, with their coaches. And we're going to learn all about their wonderful accomplishments. So with the coach, please introduce himself and just talk to the council.
Cool. My name is Sam Vickery. I'm one of the coaches along with Kara and Mike over here. We're all assistant coaches for the high school team. We have a couple of athletes here with us tonight. Bradley Gaber. Mr. Energy Guy. One to watch in the next couple of years. He was a freshman on the team this year. A bunch of top-five, top-two results in his first high school season. And he's only getting faster, so one to watch. Kobe right next to me. He was one of our state champions this year. Kobe gets major props from me. Kobe broke his leg earlier this year, I think April.
Yep.
April. And came back and won a state championship for us. That's awesome. Then Alma right here, one of our team captains. Always. She's an amazing leader. I wouldn't be surprised if she's sitting up amongst you guys one of these days. But yeah, she's great, isn't she? Yep, so good luck to her in the future.
Thank you.
And did all the coaches get introduced?
Yeah, I'm also, I'm Levi. I'm the executive director here for Devo. Yeah, I mean, to be honest, my job title is vastly overrated. I think the true success of this program really is a result of our coaches and our riders. Those are the people that really have the impact and are what make our program so special and successful in this town. You know, we have a small showing tonight, Thanksgiving break and other things like that. We have almost 40 riders on our high school team, both AHS and DHS that all ride together as one team throughout the year. Forty riders in that group. Eight hundred and sixty riders and Devo individual participants so far this year and over a thousand registrations, which I think is our biggest year yet. Obviously, we couldn't do it without the support of the city. You know, properly then working with them has been great this year. Trails 2000, obviously, with the help of Gage and Mar, we'll have the high school state champs here again for many years to come.
Well, we so appreciate all of you. Let's give them a round of applause. Oh, I will stand for these kiddos. They work hard all year round and they give up a lot of their social life and their parents as well, taking them on the many trips and the different places to be competitive across the state. Would you tell us how many go to Durango High School and how many, just off the top of your head, how many go to Animas?
Yeah, like I said, we all ride together in one group, so there's forty of us total. I'm trying to think, the breakdown between AHS and DHS is pretty close to 50/50. I think we have a few more riders from Animas, but I think it is.
No, we actually have a few more riders from DHS.
Switched up from last year.
Yeah.
And what age can a student participate with Devo?
Riders from Devo range from, basically, as soon as you can talk. You can ride a push bike in our junior programs all the way up to a senior in high school. So we offer programs from basically two to nineteen.
I see them all over town. I'm sure everyone else does. They are very respectful of the road and they're always very safe when I observe them. And so I really want to tell you how much we're so proud of you. Thank you for coming today. And we have another special treat. Alma is part of our MAYAC, and that is the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. So Alma, would you please step to the podium and tell the community what's happening?
Yes, so as Mayor Marbury said, I am on the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission and I am one of the co-chairs of that board. There are eight others that serve on that and then there's eighteen in the broader program. And we have been up to a little bit in the community in these past few weeks. We've done two different community service events. On November 1st, we had our HALO Clean where we cleaned up third half and second half. There was about ten people that attended that, so about twenty hours of community service there. And then just last weekend, on Saturday, we worked with Trails 2000 to do some trail work on the sky steps leading up to Fort Lewis College. And there was thirteen people in attendance there. We worked for three hours, so about forty hours of community service, a little bit less. So we've definitely been active in the community and we're working on some things coming up as well. So look for that and thank you for having us.
And tell me about Noel Night.
Well, yes, we are planning to announce this at another meeting, but we are going to be partnering with the city with Holly Jolly Trolley fundraiser. We're going to be doing gift wrapping in the trolley. And at this point, I think it's going to benefit Common Grounds, which is the coffee cart inside the library. So it's sort of a fundraiser, community service event for Noel Night, so.
And I bet I'll see that trolley right in front of the Welcome Center.
You sure will, right in front of the Welcome Center.
So I thank you so much for coming tonight, Alma, and doing double duty with the MAYAC as well as Devo. So I can't say you can go home and do your homework, but if you'd like to stay for City Council, we would always enjoy your presence. But otherwise, I know you probably have other fun things to do. So thank you so much for coming. While they're leaving, we are moving into the consent agenda. And the consent agenda is intended to allow the City Council by a single motion to approve matters that are considered routine or non-controversial. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Items removed from the consent agenda will be considered under Agenda Item Number Six. And just as a reminder, if you came a little bit late and want to talk to the council during public participation, we ask that you sign in down there. So Ms. Phillips, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Certainly. Items 4.1 through 4.3 are approval of minutes. 4.1 is the joint study session of October 16th, 2018. 4.2 is the regular meeting of October 16th, 2018. And 4.3 is the regular meeting of the November 5th, 2018. Item 4.4 and 4.5 are discussion and possible action items. 4.4 Concerns Resolution R. 201847, changing the date of two future City Council meetings. 4.5 is the creation of a project in the Capital Projects Fund. And Item 4.6 is final approval of Ordinance O. 201823 for the purposes of amending the zoning of real property located within the city of Durango, Colorado pursuant to Chapter 27, Section 6-3-2-3 and 2-1-2-6 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango and declaring an effective date.
Thank you. Would any council like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
I'll second. Roll call, please. Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Brookie?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes. We are moving into public participation. And public participation, I'll ask you to come to the podium. This provides an opportunity for comments that are not on the agenda. City Council will not respond to questions from the dais. Citizens should address their comments directly to the City Council. Citizens wishing to speak during this section of the agenda shall sign in prior to the start of the meeting identifying their name and address on the form provided at the meeting. Citizens will be called individually by name by the mayor to come to the podium to address the City Council. Comments are limited to three minutes. Kevin Hall is the acting city manager and he will time you and raise his hand when you're getting close to 30 seconds left. And any audiovisual materials must be provided to the city clerk before noon of the day of the meeting. Tanya Clegg?
Hi. I am from the Durango Business Improvement District and I'm here to talk about Singing with Santa, which is taking place this coming Friday. Singing with Santa is an annual tradition here in Durango that we're very proud of. It starts with a meeting at TBK Bank and then Santa will arrive at 6 o'clock to meet all the children. We will proceed down Main Avenue singing Christmas carols to Buckley Park where we'll light the Community Christmas tree. We'll provide cookies and hot chocolate for all the children, thanks to all our sponsors, Norton's, Do Works, and the DoubleTree for providing the cookies as well as Carver's for providing hot chocolate. And then there'll be free pictures with Santa that night as well.
And what time should we be there at First National Bank?
At TBK Bank, you'll want to go ahead and arrive between 5:30 and 5:45. And there'll be glow sticks for the first thousand children.
Oh, the first thousand. Okay, I'm going to be number one and two with my grandkids. So it's a great event.
It is, a very fun event. It's been a tradition way longer than the time that Bit has had this event, going back probably about forty years. So we're honored to continue the tradition. It's very fun, so we hope to see you all there. What date is that again? It is on November 23rd.
Okay. It's Friday after Thanksgiving.
Friday after Thanksgiving, yes.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Katie Popinski, please.
Good evening. How are you all? Thank you for having me. Going to pull this up very quickly. I've got some slides to share. Thank you, Mayor Marbury, for having me this evening and to the City Council for inviting me to come and all of you here to allow me to speak a little bit about La Plata Youth Services and the work that we do in our community. My name is Katie Popinski. I work as the Executive Director at La Plata Youth Services. And for the past 24 years, we have partnered with the city of Durango to provide supportive services to youth in our community who are at risk of entering the juvenile justice system. So we work really closely with the Durango Police Department, with Durango Municipal Courts, as well as a lot of other partners within our community to support our youth. The mission of La Plata Youth Services is to provide support and advocacy for youth that are facing challenges either in school, at home, or with court involvement. And in 2016, our Board of Directors and our staff developed a strategic plan. And so primarily across all the services that we offer within our organization, we're really focused at improving the quality as well as the availability of services for youth. So one of the things that we really work on as an organization is to try to address gaps in services for youth as they emerge in our community within our own programs and the youth that we see that are referred to us, as well as working within the community to identify those gaps as they come up and continuously try to increase those services for youth. Then we also really work to increase protective factors for youth. So we're really focused on building those assets for youth in our community, either with the individual relationships that we have with youth and working with families to create more, to build relationships between family, within school, within our community to just really try to enhance and build those connections, those positive connections and experiences for youth in our community. And then ultimately, as I mentioned, we're an organization that's really working with our community partners to reduce the number of youth that do move into the juvenile justice system in our community. And so over this last year, I wanted to share some of the information about the different programs and the services that we've been able to provide. So one of the areas that we continue to grow as an organization that I continue to be very excited about is the number of youth you can see in this kind of pyramid of services that we're offering to youth in a more early intervention model. Have about two minutes. Okay. And so we've really grown our services as an organization to provide more services earlier to youth before there's any kind of juvenile justice systems or law enforcement involvement. And a lot of the work that we're currently doing, we're able to do with strong partnerships that we've developed with schools. So a big focus of the work that we're doing in schools currently is around supporting increased behavioral health services, around substance use and also mental health, as well as a lot of opportunity for youth to participate in restorative justice in school before any kind of law enforcement involvement. So you can see that the majority of youth actually that we did serve last year were beginning to serve through this early intervention model, although we do still continue to support the youth that are involved in municipal court that may have involvement with law enforcement. One of the programs and highlights that I wanted to mention is that we started a new program this year in response. We were seeing a lot of youth being referred through municipal court and through law enforcement for substance-related issues. And so we implemented a new program this year called Rethinking Substances. So in addition to supporting those youth directly with substance-specific services, we're also engaging families in that process. So in addition to working with the 27 youth in that program this year, we also worked with 30 adults in building more of those protective factors for the youth. Just to end on, some of the program successes that we've seen, we continue to have a really high success rate in preventing youth from entering the juvenile justice system, a very high completion rate of youth who are referred through the court system are completing our program successfully. And in effect, those charges are not being filed in court for those youth. And additionally, we look at these protective factors of youth that we're building, so connection to community, connection to adults, increasing self-esteem, reducing substance use. And we're also seeing really positive direction in all of those areas for the youth that we're serving. And we continue to have a 96% success rate of preventing youth one year beyond program completion of re-entering the juvenile justice system. So thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Katie.
And thank you for the opportunity to come and present tonight.
Yes, and I'd like to invite you back in the spring. I'm sure there'll be more successes that you might like to share with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
We are moving into the legislative and policy-related hearings. 8.1.1 is a public hearing to consider the granting of an easement to La Plata Electric Association to install power lines for services to the new City of Durango Parks and Office and Shop, the Moore's Park Shop. Mr. Hall, was there anyone who wanted to speak on? There was not. So I will just go with some ground rules. The staff will be presenting. I'll open up public testimony. Looks like we won't be having any. And who will be the presenter?
I can present quickly, Madam Mayor. I think this one is, as you indicated, the construction of the new Park Shop near the cemetery requires some new power. So the city has agreed to, or will agree, assuming council approves this, to grant La Plata Electric some easements to get power to the new shop. There's a drawing attached to the agenda document that demonstrates where that would be. Again, this is on city property, so the charter requires council to review and approve any conveyance of real property, including easements such as this one. The drawing you have is actually just a preliminary sketch. We've agreed with La Plata Electric that the ASBILs, once the lines are actually installed, will be then surveyed and that will become the permanent easement. So this is really just, as shown on this attachment, really the temporary ones and the final ones will be done, again, following construction. That's all I have unless council asks questions about it.
Well, I'm going to close the public testimony. Does council have any questions? Seeing none, then I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll move that we direct the city attorney, excuse me, to prepare an ordinance for the first reading at the next regularly scheduled City Council meeting to consider an ordinance granting an easement to La Plata Electric Association Incorporated to install power lines for service to the new City of Durango Parks Office and Shop, that's the Moore Park Shops. Second.
Roll call, please. Councilor Brookie?
Yes.
Councilor White?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Marbury? Yes. Moving into 8.1.2 is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances for the City of Durango concerning the use of motorized vehicles on city trails. And we'll have the staff present, please. Did anyone sign up to speak at public hearing? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Marbury and the City Council. This is a public hearing to consider the use of motorized vehicles on city trails. And it really is focused in on electric bikes or what we'll call e-bikes. So we've had an extensive public process for the last two years about e-bikes and we wanted to recap that for you. The current City of Durango Code of Ordinances is listed here in front of you and it does not allow electric bikes on city trails in accordance with current city code. Because of citizen interest in this issue, three advisory boards have gotten together over the last two years. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, the Natural Lands Preservation Advisory Board, and the Multimodal Advisory Board took extensive community input at each of these meetings. There were four total meetings of the joint advisory boards and there were also four meetings of the subcommittee. During each of those meetings, we had public participation, written comments, as well as individuals that came to the meetings. In addition, each of those advisory boards during this two-year period had public comment at each of those advisory board meetings when this topic was discussed. So we may not have a lot of people here tonight, but that's certainly not an indication there's not interest in this topic. During the course of the process, the city created city trail rules and etiquette. This brochure was prepared and distributed to the community. Information has been posted on the website. We've also put this information in the Parks and Recreation Activities Guide. We have park rangers that are out on the trail system and they have educated the public about the use of e-bikes. We've distributed this flyer to bike shops. And we've also worked with our park permit recipients such as Devo on the use of electric bikes with our natural surface trails and hard surface trails in the city. One of the things that came out in the public process was some need and desire to improve the safety primarily on the Animas River Trail. And what we did in the summer of 2017 was do just that. We put up signage, put yield and cautionary signage on the trail surface itself as well as signs. And then we also painted some stripes on the River Trail, particularly in those areas where we have not good sight distance. So the e-bike pilot program was for one year. This was a recommendation of the joint advisory boards to have a pilot program. And the purpose of the pilot program is to only allow Class 1 and Class 2 electric bicycles on the hard surface trails. And a Class 1 e-bike is a bike that can be assisted through a motor, but only when you're pedaling. And a Class 2 e-bike has a throttle which can use the motor again, the electric motor again, to power you up to that 20 mile an hour maximum. And so both of those types of electric bikes were allowed on designated multi-use trails. Electric bikes were not permitted on the natural surface trails and we had an evaluation at the conclusion of this pilot program. So the pilot program began in September of 2017 and then after we did the improvements to the Animas River Trail. And we did accept public comments during that period as well to see how it was going. Our park rangers were out in the system and making observations. We did receive positive comments from the community about the improvements to the Animas River Trail. We did not hear any concerns or complaints from the community during the one-year pilot program. And we held another meeting of the joint advisory board members on October 24th of this year. And at that time, the advisory boards recommended to City Council to initiate this public hearing process and ask the city attorney to amend the existing Code of Ordinances. And so the board has recommended that the council consider the use of electric bikes on the following hard surface trails in Durango. That would be the Animas River Trail, Florita Road Trail, Gigline Gulch Road Trail, Smart 160 Trail, and the Three Springs Trail. These are the primary hard surface trails in the city of Durango. And depending upon the concurrence of City Council and the results of this public hearing, we'd like to proceed with amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances.
Thank you very much. There is no public testimony, so I have to close the public hearing and ask for questions from council.
Did you say that there were complaints at all during the process? Not one? Once we started the pilot program, there were no complaints about the use of electric bicycles from the community on the hard surface trail system. We did hear a lot of concern before we started the pilot program about conflicts primarily bicycles versus pedestrians and that's why we did some of the improvements. But after we started the pilot program, we did not hear complaints. And the improvements, I'm so happy for those, especially the striping. And have those proven effective, do you think? Is there any way to gauge? Yes, we have found that to be effective just based on behavior that we've seen on the trail as well as just comments from the community. That was some comments we did receive with some positive feedback about the improvements on the trail. And our rangers have observed that we've not had as many people going quite as fast on the Animas River Trail and they are slowing down where we're asking the public to do so.
What is the maximum speed for an e-bike?
The maximum speed would be 20 miles per hour. And there's a governor on the bikes and so whether it's a pedal assist or throttle, they cannot go as long as they stay with manufacturer specifications beyond the 20 miles per hour.
So we probably see e-bikes on the streets. You may not even know what we're seeing, for example.
Yes, we do see e-bikes on the streets and we certainly have seen e-bikes on the Animas River Trail and other hard surface trails in the city.
Just one comment. Certainly during the hearings before the public, before the trial, it seemed to me that the vast majority of the concerns were about safety on the trail. And I think the innovations you implemented largely addressed those and the association with e-bikes was slender. It was behavioral issues for bicyclists in general. And I think the result of the trial confirms that. And the joint board meetings, meeting this fall was sort of like, yeah, do we even need this meeting? Because everybody was in consensus and there was no, you know, the comments we received were favorable. So I'm only too happy to see us go forward here.
Sir Brookie?
Yeah, I'd like to commend the staff on the process that you went through over this period. Instead of jumping right into it and we really, I think, listened and heard the concerns and did roll it out as a test for the past period of time to this successful end result. So anybody that's been to any urban environment or Europe or anywhere else understands that this is becoming a rapidly expanding viable mode of transportation in any community. So with that, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do. I need to close the public hearing then.
I do have one more question.
Oh, okay.
One more question.
Go right ahead.
I also just want to also commend you on such a great thorough, comprehensive, and inclusive process with the community. I think this is such a good example of really great collaborative efforts amongst the joint boards. And this is just a really good example, I think, for us to emulate going forward for projects. So thank you for all that hard work. I know it was hours. And I just had one more question before we let Mr. Brookie make a motion, Councilor Brookie make a motion, which is, I did hear at the last meeting some questions about consideration around, you know, also more discussion around soft surface trails. Will there be process around that and what might that look like and when? So we have done a lot of research about what other communities across the nation and certainly in the state of Colorado are doing with natural surface trails. Currently, most communities are not allowing e-bikes on natural surface trails. They're not allowed on federal property currently by federal regulations. So the PLS and Forest Service lands around Durango do not consider e-bikes to be non-motorized and they're not allowed on any trail that is non-motorized. And what we're seeing in most communities is they are waiting to see how that goes. They are allowing the e-bike trials and they're allowing e-bikes by changing their Code of Ordinances on their hard surface trails. Ordinances on their hard surface trails, but that is not happening on the soft surface trails now. Jefferson County Open Space is doing a trial now to allow only Class 1 e-bikes, which is the pedal-assist e-bike on the natural surface trails. That will be completed in 2019. And Colorado State Parks is also allowing the Class 1 electric bicycle on the state parks trails. Other than that, there's no other activity in this area and so what the advisory boards would like to do is to wait and see. And the Natural Lands Board will likely take the lead role on this. We're asking the Multimodal and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to consider this, to see if we'd like to go forward with e-bikes on natural surface trails in the future. If there would be, it would likely be a trial period at first and similar to the hard surface trail, we'd do it for about a year and then see if we want to come back and amend the code further to allow them on natural surface trails. But right now, we're just in a wait and see and let's observe what's happening across the country and certainly in the state of Colorado.
Okay.
With that then, a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending Article 3 of Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances concerning the use of motorized vehicles on city trails.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Yussit?
Yes.
Counselor Broke?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
And Mayor Marbury?
Yes. We are moving into council reports and actions and I've asked Assistant City Manager Kevin Hall for a report on the sales tax, which will be reflective of September and the lodgers' tax.
Sure. So as Mayor Marbury stated, October report for September collection, sales tax was down .9, so a little under 1% in September. And then year-to-date, it's up 1%. As for lodgers' tax, it's down nearly 5% for the September figures, minus 4.8. And then year-to-date, it's down 5.2%.
Okay, thank you. The reason that we talk about sales tax is that's because how the majority of the general revenue fund is actually funded and that's our police department, our people that work for the city, and also the street department. So we aren't as bad as we thought we might be. It's getting better and, you know, we all had tough times during from June, July, and August. So we are seeing a gradual climb and with our great weather in Durango and more snow coming, we want to spread the word to all your friends on Facebook that Durango is open for business and we would love to see all of our friends from New York to Texas to California to come and spend the holidays with us. And don't forget, and I'm going to plug this, Noel Night is at December the 7th and that's when all of the downtown businesses would love to see you for your Christmas shopping and gift wrapping to help all of our shop locals. In fact, I'll just show you. See my shoes? Okay? I buy sparkly shoes and I buy them and I shop locally. So if you like to have some sparkly shoes like the bear, then you can find them right here in Durango. Shop local, help your merchants, and improve that sales tax. So with that, I'm going to ask for Counselor Yussit.
Well, it's not going to be nearly as fun as that one.
Okay.
I just did want to make sure everyone was aware Roger Zonariatus with the La Plata Economic Development Alliance has announced his resignation effective December 6th. So as a board, we are working on appointing an interim executive director and we are also in the process of forming a search committee to hire another one and determine what type of search we will do, likely a national search.
Thank you.
So that's unfortunate. He did get a standing ovation at our investor meeting, the last investor meeting, and he's added a huge amount. He's contributed so much to the alliance, so he will be missed. But he's staying local.
Yeah. Can you describe what he's going to or?
Yes, he's going to go to the Southern U Tribe as their economic development manager. I think his title might be somewhat different, but he's doing economic development for them.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Broke?
Well, hopefully we can keep him on the Airport Commission as well.
Right.
As a city-appointed, the Airport Commission, that's right, served him on. I don't have anything particularly except the past news, I just, Paradise, California reminded me, and watching the mayor go on TV and have to explain to the nation what happened in their community and what their plans to rebuild are. It just reminds me about the Gold King spill and of course the fires this year when Mayor Marbury was on board. But to have to look at your community in devastation like that, I'm a total wipeout. Our river turned orange, that was bad enough. We had fires, that was bad enough. But what happened to them could actually happen to us and that's the urban wildfire interface that is so critical to Crestview Neighborhood and I just think of our town, what we would do in that very, very similar situation and how fast it could happen and almost did. It makes me, we've got our emergency preparedness guy in the back of the room and we are hopefully as prepared as we can be for that eventuality.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a couple of brief announcements, coming upcoming events. Last Thursday of the month, Green Drinks at Carver's at 5 o'clock. Thursday, the 6th of December, the San Juan Basin Health Department is having a suicide prevention forum for two hours starting 12:30 at the library. This is a community event to update on what's going on in the community and get input from feedback, feedback from the community around this very serious issue. And there's a lot of effort. I think the Health Department is sort of at the center of these efforts. And actually, it occurs to me also on the evening of the 29th, the Lifelong Learning Series at Fort Lewis College is presenting Dr. Kip Boyd of Mercy Regional Medical Center, who is really an expert. I've heard a version of the presentation he's going to give about sort of the history and present of opioids. And there is a clear connection between the opioid epidemic and also the suicide epidemic. I can assure you, Dr. Boyd's presentation will be very, very informative.
Well, the mayor attended the 100 Club last week, the dinner that honors our first responders, our policemen, our State Patrol, our firefighters. It was really a very moving experience and they also offer scholarships for the children of all of these first responders. I want to remind everyone, we're still in a drought and so you still have to be careful, even though we think it's winter time around here. Be careful, be diligent, be aware, and take care of our wonderful town. The mayor also attended the Durango Film Festival, Teata, was presented on the Native American Celebrating the Native American Heritage Week. And I spoke and to a full house and so I look forward to the Durango Film Festival in the spring as well. So with that, I think we've concluded the business of the city and community announcements and I want to wish all of you a very happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe and we'll see you on December the 3rd, I think, 4th. 4th. There you go.